I am Taylor.
Yeah, exactly.
Am I supposed to? Oh, yes.
Okay, so we'll call this in, uh, call order at, uh, six thirty. Um, so we can swear the new members in first, so the first order of business is swearing in of the newly elected council members, Aldermanic District One Mike Smith and Aldermanic District Three Steve Sayoun. And we also have returning Aldermanic District Five Neil Hicks and Councilmember at large Patrick Singer. So Heather, I would let you take those in whatever order you choose.
All right, we'll start at the front here.
Yes, you're at the front.
Um, probably her, right, right now. I, Patrick Singer, having been appointed to the position of City of Whitewater Council Member at Large, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, the ordinances of the City of Whitewater, and will fairly and impartially discharge the duties of said office or position to the best of my ability.
I do.
Does she have to repeat?
Uh, please, officer.
I, Michael Smith, having been appointed to the position of the City of Whitewater, Aldermanic District One, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, the ordinances of the City of Whitewater, and will fairly and impartially discharge the duties of said office or position to the best of my ability.
I do.
Sign, Steve.
Thank you. I, Stephen Sayoun, having been appointed to the position of the City of Whitewater, Councilmember, Aldermanic District Three, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and the ordinances of the City of Whitewater, and will fairly and impartially discharge the duties of said office or position to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
All right. I, Neil Hicks, having been appointed to the position of City of Whitewater, Councilmember, Aldermanic District Five, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, the ordinances of the City of Whitewater, and will fairly and impartially discharge the duties of said office or position to the best of my ability.
I do.
Okay, my reign is nearing an end, let's do the roll call.
Patrick Singer.
Here.
Greg Marchak.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Brian Shannon.
Here.
Steve Sayoun.
Present.
Warren Smith.
Here.
Neil Hicks.
Here.
And please rise if you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as I move to the second order of business, it's the election of council president and president pro temp. And according to ordinances two point zero eight one zero two zero, at the first regularly scheduled meeting in April, after the election, the council shall elect a president and president pro temp who shall act as president in the absence of the regular president. So usually we do a motion and a second, but I am up, I will leave it up, Patrick, if, uh, the body wants to move it different way, we certainly can, otherwise I'm looking for a motion and a second as far as, uh, nominee. Move Patrick Singer, president.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for Patrick Singer. Do I have another motion? Okay, so with that, uh, we will vote on whether or not Patrick Singer will be the council president. Heather, call the roll.
Singer.
abstain.
Hicks.
Aye.
Ossman.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Sayoun.
Aye.
Marchak.
Aye.
And Smith.
Aye.
All right, well, thank you, John, for getting that started, and thank you all for your faith in letting me herd the cats for another, uh, year here. All right, so next up, we'll move on to the election of council president pro temp. Are there any nominations for council president pro temp?
I nominate Brian Shannon.
Is there a second? I don't think we need a second, but is there a second?
A second.
All right. Are there any other nominations for president, council president pro temp? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All right, seeing no further nominations, there is only one nomination on the floor for Brian Shannon as council president pro temp. With that, we will proceed to, um, Heather calling the roll.
And Smith.
Aye.
Marchak.
Aye.
Sayoun.
Aye.
Shannon.
Abstain.
Ossman.
Aye.
Hicks.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Brian. All right, next up, we have approval of the agendas. Anything any council member would like to add or remove or rearrange at this point, uh, on the agenda, or is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Move item twenty-eight into the consent agenda.
All right, item number twenty-eight is discussion of possible action regarding Whitewater Solar's joint development agreement, city and townships. Any objection to that? Um, all right, is there a motion to approve with that amendment?
So move with the amendment.
Second.
All right, move by Shannon, seconded by Ossman, who I didn't have to get used to. Um, to approve the agenda as amended, uh, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That agenda is approved. All right, next up, we have our guest speaker, um, for this meeting, we have, I think, one more right after this, on May sixth, but this one's a little bit different. We're hearing from, uh, County, Washington County Executive Josh Schuman, uh, about next generation housing in Washington County and the work that they've, uh, done over there. So Josh, I, also, I think we need to mention Josh is an alum.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
UW-Whitewater, so we're glad he is here, so, uh, I know you had passed out your presentation, so if there's anything else you want to do to lead us on, otherwise, go right ahead.
All right, well, thank you very much, uh, Mr. President, congratulations, uh, congratulations on those of you who were just recently elected. Um, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you today and to be back here in Whitewater. I watched the second plane hit the tower, uh, right over there, when you used to be able to walk straight through here. Um, so this is a, this town is near and dear to my heart, um, so thanks for the chance to come and talk to you a little bit. Um, the presentation is in front of you, but I'd like to start with something else. Um, if you would, each, uh, everybody in the room, if you participate, I would appreciate it, um, and take thirty seconds, turn to the person next to you and the other opposite thirty seconds, and explain the first home you ever owned, or the one that maybe your parents or guardians owned. Uh, how big was it, the very first one, okay? Uh, not, not when you were living in your parents' basement or something like that or had a newspaper out, um, but please explain that first house. How many square feet was it? Um, how many house, what size was the lot approximately? And how much did you pay per month for your mortgage? This is participatory, so it relies on you talking to each other. All right, ten more seconds. We're way past the minute, but. All right, thank you very much for doing that exercise. I always, I always enjoy it, it usually loosens people up, everybody's proud of their first home, and most of them are probably not terribly different from, uh, what, Alderman Shannon? Am I pronouncing that right? Uh, explain, could you explain your answer?
Uh, about thirty-three hundred, or eh, thirteen hundred square feet, um, and a point-two-four acre lot, and I like to say that it was a nice nineteen-eighties green until it turned into a colors blue last summer.
And when did you purchase that, approximately?
January of twenty-three.
Twenty-three, so, and you, you mentioned how much per month were you, are you paying for that mortgage?
Uh, currently at fourteen-seventy-five.
Okay, fourteen-seventy-five, so probably five years ago, it was under a thousand, uh, a month for that new mortgage payment. Uh, my first home was in Princeton, Wisconsin, I think John's first home also, if I remember it.
Seventy-four thousand dollars.
What's that?
Seventy-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, ain't my brother. Uh, my, my home was eleven-hundred square feet on a third of an acre lot, double lot, it was beautiful, loved it, um, and the mortgage payment was about seven hundred bucks a month. Most of America, that house, both of those that are just been described, I don't know about here in Whitewater, but those homes are illegal, you can't build them anymore. Lots are too small, houses are too small, there's not sidewalk on both sides, there's not curb and gutter on both sides, God forbid you don't have matching mailboxes or matching light posts, uh, and no HOA fees, uh, also prohibited in many communities throughout America. And so what next generation housing is about is reliving and rebuilding those, the home that Alderman Shannon explained and the one that I explained in, in Princeton. You'll notice in my presentation, it starts off by talking about build, baby, build, and the reason that is, is I think housing generally speaking, we just need more supply. We're in a crisis that we've created, uh, we've regulated away the ability to build most housing of, of all sorts, but I think most importantly, there's a missing middle, and that is what we just described as many of our first homes. We've regulated it away, uh, at the local level, so, so I always tell folks, here's the bad news. The bad news is we, and before being county executive, I was county administrator and village administrator and city administrator, we collectively regulated that ability away. But what's the good news? We also can change it. And, and most, maybe most importantly of all, we all, and myself as an elected county executive, are elected by the people, and we represent their interests, and it is really we, the people, that have the ability to change that, and so I would implore you in this conversation, mostly in Washington County revolving around homeownership, uh, but in all types of housing, I would encourage you to make those changes yourself. Be courageous enough, uh, to deregulate, because it's really what's put us in this spot. Now, when I graduated from UW-Whitewater, uh, in two thousand and four, uh, it was only a few short years after that, uh, that a little thing called the Great Recession happened. And most of you probably remember it, uh, some of you may have read about it, um, but at that time, I, when I graduated in oh-four, I was married, we, we literally drove out of Whitewater over to the Fort Atkinson Hospital, had our son, and moved to Illinois to get my master's degree. I got, I had my first condo when I was in Rockford, I bought my first house in two thousand and six in Princeton, we had our first child, all before the Great Recession. I'm, I'm forty-three years old, I was born in nineteen eighty-one. For those of you who are familiar with demographics, that means I'm the oldest of millennials. Most of my classmates, the ones particularly younger than me in White, at UW-Whitewater, and everyone since, weren't nearly as lucky as I was. They weren't able to buy a house quick enough, which delayed everything else in their lives. They couldn't get jobs fast enough, they couldn't get married fast enough, they couldn't get kids, and oftentimes, now my son, my, my oldest son now is twenty-one, he's a junior at UW-Lacrosse. Most of my friends, their kids are ten and under. That's how big the gap was between those of us who made it under the wire, who were able to have that first home at an affordable price, who got that first job, and those who didn't. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe this conversation that you're so courageously undertaking is literally the definition of the difference between the ability of passing the torch of the American dream from past generations to the next generation. If we don't make change, if you're not courageous enough to change those codes, to deregulate, you literally could be preventing that torch from passing. Because homeownership, and that's why I emphasize our program being, uh, narrowed in on homeownership, it is the single greatest generational wealth builder in America. It's not a 401K, it's not Roth IRAs, it's owning a home, particularly for the working class. And the truth be told, a lot of our graduates from schools just like Whitewater, that home is also their greatest single generational wealth builder. So please, please do the good work that you were elected to do in, in navigating this conversation. Now, of course, it's much more complicated than the local level, it's also the federal level, but solve what you can solve. And what you can solve is zoning regulations that have gotten us into this place. So I'll draw your attention to the second slide. Um, this is a breakdown of what, what has happened in Washington County. If you look at the, on the left side of the slide, you'll see, uh, this, this came from a study that we did about four years ago. Uh, this is a, a look at kind of the, the working class, if you will, of, of Washington County. Where were they at, what could they afford? Essentially, uh, individuals making somewhere between twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour can afford at the very most three hundred and twenty-five thousand to four, three hundred and forty thousand at a six-and-a-half percent interest rate, which of course, right now, it's closer to seven percent. The in, the median household income in Wa, in Washington County is about ninety thousand dollars a year. Now, that's household income, that's not individual income, okay? So when we did our analysis, we focused in on household income, not an individual basis. If you look on the right hand of the slide, you can see what was being built. Predominantly, what you will notice, uh, with very rare exception, is that we were building more than anybody on the left side, the affordability side, could actually afford. So all of the folks working in our, in our industries, Bron Newton, um, Milwaukee Tool, they, they are in that twenty to twenty-five dollar an hour starting range, they couldn't afford a ho, a home in Washington County, and I imagine the folks working at Generac or, uh, industries all across Whitewater and probably Walworth County are in a similar boat. Next slide, please. Now, I, I would like to walk you through, uh, ju, this is a series of slides, but I think it's absolutely fascinating, and it really illustrates the point of passing the, the torch of the American dream. If you don't buy what I was selling in regards to passing that torch and, and homeownership being the single greatest generational wealth builder in America, then, then follow along, if you will. So this is a demographic pyramid of the United States in the nineteen seventies. If you, if you flip to the next slide, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, so typically what this shows is, this is an interactive slide, and what it shows is in the nineteen seventies, we have an actual demographic pyramid, like truly in pyramid form. As you go decade by decade through all the way to twenty-thirty and twenty-forty, it becomes a silo, and then becomes an inverted pyramid. And so for those of you who currently own homes and were lucky like me and got in under the wire, maybe it was a couple decades before the wire, um, we've benefited greatly. For those who haven't, or, or who are yet to have that opportunity in Gen Z and Gen Alpha, we will be on the bottom end of that pyramid, trying to hold up the top end. What am I trying to tell you? What I'm trying to tell you is your community, I don't, and whether it's Whitewater, or Walworth County, or Wisconsin, or the Midwest, and quite honestly, almost all of America, will have that same exact problem. What this turns into is a, is a crisis of service and a crisis of community. Peop, who's going to serve on the volunteer fire company anymore? Who's going to serve on the church council or the Rotary Club? Who is going to literally create the community that sustains all of us? Who provides all of the services that we need in one way, shape, or form, whether it's a service organization or not? So, next slide, please. If you contemplate housing demand in Washington County, uh, for us, uh, we are currently at about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand people, um, we're roughly the same size as Walworth County, I think just a tick, uh, larger than Walworth County, uh, we are in a trajectory towards a hundred and eighty thousand in twenty-fifty. Now, I will tell you, that is a very aggressive, um, projection. My goal is not a hundred and eighty thousand people by twenty-fifty, because it's not realistic. You know why it's not realistic? Because that demographic pyramid is doing to us what it's doing to everybody. The reality is, if we can hold The reality is, if we can hold steady around one-hundred-and-forty or one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand people in the next twenty to thirty years, it's going to be a miracle. We're going to be dying faster than, than we're having births. And we're, we're very, very close to that now. So here's a look at our, our working population, and I think this begins to really illustrate the point. You can see that in, in twenty-twenty, our, our working population already begins to decline. From twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, that became, that becomes even more precipitous as years go on. The next slide is, is a kind of some data. I'm not going to talk you through the specifics of it, but suffice it to say, if you look kind of at the middle section, this is really the, kind of the missing middle area that we're very, we're, we're most focused on. In twenty-twenty, what we want to have is three to six months of inventory. The closer you are to six months of inventory, the more even your supply and demand economy is. You can see we're about half of that on the, on the lower end, or the more affordable end of the spectrum. And the higher you get, it's closer to six months. So we want to be much closer to six months all the way across, but particularly where our workforce is trying to get into housing industry in the first place. I imagine it looks very, very similar here in Walworth County. This, this slide illustrates about the same thing. So let's go to the next one and start to talk about how do we solve this. So for us, for, in Washington County, when I got elected five years ago, what I was most worried about is, if, with all these things being true, how do we get our kids to come home and stay home? And maybe here in Whitewater, it's a little different with university campus. How do you get graduates to stick, be sticky and stay close, a, as well as your children? There's four major factors. I started to talk about those just a few minutes ago with talking about deregulating. Now, one thing I want you to keep in mind is, most of the small homes on small lots that were constructed, were built somewhere between mid-nineteen forties, post-World War II America, and the early nineteen-eighties. And what happened during that time, especially in the nineteen forties, was the United States was pushing to actually do building. And the federal government started this thing called the Federal Housing Administration, who wasn't in the business of mortgages at the time. They were in the business of providing developers low-cost, low-interest loans to build small houses on small lots, with a few unsettling conditions that went along with them. We can learn from what we did in the past, get rid of the bad stuff, keep the good stuff. You move forward to the nineteen-eighties, Ronald Reagan eliminated, basically pushed FHA into the mortgage business, out of the land development business, handed it over to the private sector and the banking industry. He also made the single greatest leap in Section Eight housing of any president. Most people don't know that. When that happened, the banking industry was financing development like crazy. So you saw a lot of new homes being built from the eighties. And then, of course, everybody remembers the nineties and the early two thousands when we were building like mad. And then two thousand and eight. So what was our response from the federal government in two thousand and eight? After the, after the bubble burst, what did we do? The same thing we always do. We regulated the snot out of financing for housing. So much so that banks can't lend to developers anymore. Not the full weight. As a matter of fact, my wife used to work for M&amp;I Bank. When we first left Princeton and went to Richfield, she worked there for just a couple of years, and they went under it. If you remember the time, and a lot of you probably banked with M&amp;I, or maybe Farmers, Farmers Merchants Bank before M&amp;I, they had a lot of investment in real estate. In the South in particular, Arizona was the big one. And they started to tear down subdivisions. Because M&amp;I financed the entire thing, from a, from a cornfield in some places, or, you know, maybe the desert down in Arizona, all the way to the end when somebody bought the house. They, they financed all of it. Development costs, all of our permit fees that are now, now so astronomically high, impact fees, infrastructure costs, everything. And when people couldn't pay, M&amp;I literally went under and got bought out by BMO. And there's lots of banks like that. And Dodd-Frank then regulated away the, the ability for banks to do that. But here's the problem. There's no one left. The private industry banks aren't doing it because they're not allowed to do it. The federal government's not doing it because we stopped doing that o, over forty years ago. There's no one left to do it. Another place where local municipalities, whether it's through your community development authority, through TIF districts, or other mechanisms, in, in the case of Washington County, we started our program with our ARPA dollars, where you can step in and help cover some of those costs, provide low-interest loans like we did yesteryear with FHA. The other thing, so lots, labor, and land are the three things. We don't have a lot of control over the cost of labor. It is what it is. If the demographic pyramid is bad for volunteer fires, you can pretty much, firefighters, excuse me, you can pretty much guarantee it's going to be bad for the construction industry, the trades, and everything else. What we can control is the cost of those lots, because we put a lot of pressure as municipalities and county on lot costs. And in some cases, if you own a significant amount of land here in Whitewater, you might be able to control the cost of the land. Maybe you have a large old industrial park that never developed. Maybe you have an old space that you reserved for a park at one time that just never happened. Maybe you have other properties, maybe the university has some, maybe the, maybe the school district has some. Those could all be areas where you look at utilizing that land to help drive down the cost of homeownership. Next slide, please. So here is what we did with our framework. And I'd encourage you, if you're interested in our program and learning more, our entire framework is out on our county website. You're, you're more than welcome to look at it. Feel free to reach out to myself, and I can connect you with our community development team if you have any questions. As I mentioned, we started this in twenty-twenty-one. We would have started in twenty-twenty, but yeah, things were a little crazy that year, if you remember. But we, we pulled a, a large group of folks together. And we started with city managers and local planners, and trying to figure out how do we drive down these costs? And everything, every single time, came down to local regulation and local fees, including infrastructure costs. Over and over. We also pulled in all of our private sector partners. Local developers, local builders, local title companies, local realtors. The list was very, very long. And it was all about pulling people together to try to solve this problem. Because what, what everybody seemed to resonate with, although there was massive disagreements on, should we build apartments, or should we build duplexes, or should we build single-family homes? What everybody identified with was that same process that you just went through when we started this conversation. That opportunity to own that first home, and that opportunity for long-term and generational wealth. So our program, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, started with ARPA dollars. I, I'll be, full disclosure, Washington County is probably the most conservative county in the state of Wisconsin. And I, I was very much opposed to ARPA dollars, mostly because all we did was borrow money, that our kids, probably three generations from now, are still going to be paying off. But when we got the dollars, the question was, how do we invest them in a way that has a return? Not in more government programs, not in things that are here today and gone tomorrow, but that are going to long-term give us a payback.
Can you explain what ARPA dollars are?
Sure, yes, absolutely. Thank you for the question. ARPA dollars were federal government dollars, under President Biden, that, that, I can't remember the exact name of, of the acronym, American Recovery Plan Act, that might be it. And they came to municipalities, to counties, in large form. In Washington County, and probably pretty close in Walworth County, we, Washington County got about twenty-six-and-a-half million dollars cash. Now, there's a list of things that it can be used for, but any city manager or county administrator that's worth his weight can figure out how to use it however they want. The bottom line for us was, every time we made an investment, it was how could we utilize it to have a return for the community long-term? Thank you for asking that question. But the, the funding source really is, is less relevant than what you're directing it towards, which is why I referenced TIF districts or CDA dollars. Particularly TIF, and, and John and I were just talking a few minutes ago about extending TIF's, provision in law that allows for you to take some of that increment from previous TIF districts and utilize it for exactly this type of thing. To help developers cover some of those costs, or to help provide low-interest loans. All of those tools were things that we investigated and implemented through our framework. One important piece that I don't believe is in the rest of our, of rest, rest of this document, but I want to, I want to drill home, is we worked very, very diligently. And I, I understand you, you had a presentation from Sheboygan County not too long ago. It's coming next. So one major difference between what Sheboygan County and what Washington County are doing is their dollars have come almost exclusively, I believe almost exclusively, from industry. From their massive industries up in Sheboygan, they've got some fantastic large businesses. In Washington County, these are tax dollars. That's not to say there's anything wrong with the way they, they modeled theirs. For us, how do we protect that taxpayer investment so that it isn't flipped-for-profit by a home buyer and then pocketed? Okay? So for example, if we made a twenty-thousand-dollar investment per lot, which is about what you'll see in just a few minutes, and that investment is in the form of infrastructure, there's no tangible way to get to those dollars. And you've, you've likely decreased the actual cost compared to the fair market value. Well, the mechanism that we put in place to protect the, the taxpayers who helped fund that is a five-year deed restriction, where the individual has to live there for five years' time. On a, on an inverted prorated basis, they earn it back by living there. And after five years' time, they, the equity is theirs. It's, it's not a co-op, it's not, we have to lock, lock in affordability for a long term. This is very white glove, let the free market do its thing. The government steps in where the, where the free market has indicated it, it can't or it won't. And then once it's up on its feet, you back off and let it do its thing. Next slide, please. So here's a few key provisions of our initiative that I think are a little bit different maybe than other places. One, the county board was absolutely emphatic that there would never be a use of eminent domain. Anybody not know what eminent domain is? Everybody does know what eminent domain is. Short, short version of what eminent domain is, if you don't know, government taking land and using it for what they wish to use it for. And by taking, I mean, you have to pay fair market price, but the person selling doesn't have a choice. Maximum price points. So when we started, these are current price points. When we started this program, the price points were three-twenty to four-twenty. We followed the market, and as, as it has gone up, we are now three-forty to four-twenty. And you can see the breakdown of where all of our homes need to be constructed in, in cooperation with local developers. I mentioned the twenty-thousand dollars per lot. That is, when we work with the developer, let's say they have a hundred, a hundred lots, they can qualify for up to twenty-thousand dollars per lot, so twenty times a hundred. That is zero percent loan to the developer, that is then paid back to the county upon, upon time of sale. So it's, it's basically some liquidity capital that maybe otherwise a, a local developer wouldn't be able to get. Gap financing in another form. There are, we have also in a couple of instances, and I'll show you these as we go along, instituted TID increment payback. So we've utilized the loan program, and then we use the TID to pay back the loan program. Typically, we'll use that, the times we have used it are in brownfield redevelopment sites. So let's say you have an old brewery or an old manufacturing facility that's been bladed, you want to tear that down, you could utilize our program in loan form, along with the TIF district, and utilize the TIF district, take down the building, clean up the area, and then use this program to help with infrastructure costs and underlying costs. In addition to that program, we also have another component. We, it's a six thou, up to a six-thousand-dollar permit fee incentive. Now, this is a grant basis. And we did this for one reason and one reason only. We collectively in government charge very high fees. And if you talk to your finance director, or, or maybe treasurer, whoever manages your finances, and, and you talk to them long enough, you'll get to a point where they'll acknowledge that, yes, that permit fee pays for the billion inspector, but it actually is also paying for a whole lot of other things in your city. Chances are. Unless you're different than everybody else, which, you know, it's possible. That six-thousand-dollar permit fee that incentive that we provide is to illustrate the point, and we've, we've put the math to this. If, depending on the size of lots, depending on the number of lots you build, and depending on your equalized value, that permit fee that you're charging is a disincentive to any developer, to any person wanting to build, just by its very nature. If you remove that fee, and you build that three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, or four-hundred-thousand-dollar house, your payback is about four or five years. It's insanely fast. It makes more sense for you as council members, it makes more sense for your community to incentivize building by lowering or eliminating permit fees than it does to raise them higher just to balance your budgets. Now, we could, how we spent a long time talking about net new construction and tax levy limits and all the hardships that municipalities are going through, no doubt about it. But if we're going to invest our way out of this and solve a much bigger community, and quite frankly, state problem, we have to start thinking a lot more like that, in my opinion. Also, I, I do want to mention, our programs are one-hundred percent owner-occupancy requirement. There are no, there is no ability to purchase and, and rent. When we started this program in particular, one of the hot topics was out-of-state, mostly east coast, west coast multimillionaires coming in and buying up small houses on small lots and renting them out at very high rates, at that time. That seems to have waned, but at the time, it was a major concern. And owner-occupancy requirement stays to this day. The other thing that's important to know about that requirement is that it eases the mind of the neighbors, the neighbor, the neighborhoods that surround it. So I think this, I think I've covered this point well, but suffice it to say, we call the program next generation housing, but the reality is, it has almost nothing to do with housing and almost everything to do with the next generation. Housing is, I learned on this campus, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And the baseline in the hierarchy of needs is shelter. And we, we don't have enough of it. And homeownership in particular, remember, in the, in the Declaration of Independence, Thomas Jefferson said, "Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Well, he stole that phrase, it wasn't his. Well, I'll say maybe borrowed it and then modified it. It was life, liberty, and the pursuit of property. And if you read the Constitution, it goes on in detail to talk about life and property, and the importance of government protecting those things. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of property is next generation housing. Giving people that shot at owning a piece of land. Literally in America, that piece of dirt, I think they sing a song about it now, buy dirt. That piece of dirt is who we are. It's viscerally, it's what we protect. It's what, what makes this country different than every other place. There's something about owning your own piece of land, and it's yours, right? I mean, when you, when you sign that mortgage, as stressful as it is in wondering, I'm sure you are, God knows I was, how the heck am I going to pay this monthly mortgage? But it's, it's, it's yours. You're not paying rent to somebody anymore, or to the government anymore. So it's not about housing, it's about the next generation. Next slide, please, thank you. All right, so here are a couple of the developments that we've been working on. The, the smaller one, Skyway Park, was a seven-lot area within an existing development. You can read the details there yourself, that was in the city of Hartford, Wisconsin. They are, they have now subsequently gone on to their second development. It was, it was quite controversial, it, the mayor supported it, but I think it died four to three on the floor of the city council. And that's why they went with a smaller seven, seven unit to see, see if it would work. Turns out, it's pretty compelling to watch people buy their houses for the first time, and when you put council members next to them, everybody's pretty proud. The Oaks of Jackson is probably the premier example. If you look, flip through the pages of the handout that we gave you, you're going to see some images and pictures of both of these developments, especially as you get farther back. The Oaks, when it's done, will be about a hundred and six units total. As you can see, three-hundred-and-twenty to four-hundred-and-twenty thousand. So here's, here's one of the things that's most interesting about next generation housing. We have heard a great demand for our workforce, particularly nurses and engineers in our neighborhoods. But certainly, of course, blue collar work as well. I go to every single house that's part of our next generation housing program. And how many of you have seen the movie It's a Wonderful Life? Okay? So they, when, when they hand the bread, the salt, and the wine, you remember that scene? So we literally do that for every couple, or every individual, I should say, that buys a home in next generation housing. And the funnest part, when I walked through the Oaks of, Oaks of Jackson, and Tara, my assistant, did it with me, we went to five houses in a row one day. And it was like, every, every house right on that one side of the block. Registered nurse, engineer. Registered nurse, engineer. Registered nurse, electrician. And every single one of them, like, no joke, with one exception. Every single house was, we just got married, we bought our house, and we're expecting. We bought our house, then we got married, and we're hoping to have kids. Every single house. Every single house. If you want the opportunity to build community, there is no better way than just give people a chance to do it. They're going to build it. The government's not, city is not, UW is not. It's going to be these individuals who are not only going to build houses, but they're going to build everything that it means to be from Whitewater, from Walworth County. All right, I'll get off my high horse, I'm sorry. I get kind of excited, as you can tell. So here's a couple of photos that I'll just point out. The Oaks of Jackson, literally the houses that I just described with the young couples eventually getting married and having kids are all on the bottom side. You can see a bunch of dirt in their backyards. All those houses have now filled in. You can see this is 103 homes. And there's a combination. You can't see it here, but if you went up to Jackson right now, you begin to start to see what it's going to look like. The homes on, this truly is looking, you're looking south, and north is down. The homes on the south side are all in that 420 range. The homes north of those are almost all exactly the same size as the ones that we are now building. The ones on the north end, the smaller ones, those are 320,000. When we first proposed the Oaks of Jackson, it was, you know, government housing. Everybody was terrified of Section 8 government housing. They didn't want to have that in their backyard. Now, I ran for reelection last April. I knocked every single door that was anywhere within a radius of those homes. And all of them but two said, "Well, if you'd have just told us this is what you were building, we love it." Well, we did tell them that was what we were building, and we actually had the renderings and all. But the point is, these homes are their neighborhood. Why do I use that illustration and tell you that example? It matters where you put these neighborhoods. Don't be mistaken. Putting a neighborhood of $300,000 homes next to a multimillion-dollar development will not work. That doesn't fit. That is what zoning is for. Not the mailboxes and light posts and curbs on both sides. If you find a way to blend it together, and this is the work that the city administrators and planners really helped with, we're finding the locations where it made sense. We don't want to be next to industry, and we don't want to be next to certain housing types. Where do we want to be? That's something that your administration can absolutely help you through. Next slide is Skyway Park. As I mentioned, this is a seven-lot unit. That last home is now built. I believe they're all now sold. Here's a couple that are in the works. So Regal Place is in Kewaskom, Wisconsin. That's the northern part of Washington County, about 25 minutes south of Fond du Lac. This is the home of Regalware. Former West Ben, West Ben Company and Regalware merged. Their headquarters building was torn down to make way for Regal Place. It was done in partnership with Regalware. This was a brownfield site, the one that I illustrated a little bit earlier with our Tax Agreement Finance District, and it explains that on the slide. By the, the ground should be breaking, it's April, should be this month. If it's not this month, it'll be next month. 48 owner-occupied units, this is immediately adjacent to our high school football, their high school football field and their middle school and high school. The last program that I'm going to, I'll mention to you, and maybe it's a little different for the city, I'm not quite sure on your circumstance, but it's maybe as powerful or more powerful a program than next-generation housing. They're both phenomenal, they've been humongous successes. We have a down payment incentive program called Harton Homestead. So when I started this process, I am convinced, I said it at the beginning of this session, I'll say it again and again and again, this is a Ronald Reagan supply-side economics, supply, 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 build, baby, build issue, no questions asked. Because we stopped building almost 20 years ago. However, there is a demand component. Most of you sitting at this table, I think some of you mentioned you graduated from here or maybe graduated from somewhere else. I took, I carried a lot of debt from this place for many years, so at least I can relate to it. It is very difficult to be able to get that first home. Now, I was fortunate, I mentioned I watched the second plane hit the tower here. I was deployed to Iraq in '03. I took credits while I was going to school, while I was in Iraq. Very proud of that. So I had a lot of benefit that I'm privileged to have. Not everybody's got that. Not everybody's got a mom and dad who can make a down payment for them. And so Harton Homestead is that, in part. We heard from developers and builders over and over and over again, and this might not surprise you. Josh, why would we build $300,000 houses when we could build $500,000 houses every day, all day long, and sell them as fast as we build them? You know what I say to them? "God bless America, build as many as you can." That's just not what I'm trying to solve. And if government got into that business, shame on us. But in this business, there aren't builders and there aren't developers doing this. So what they had suggested was, well, why don't you have a down payment incentive program that moves people from $350,000 houses up to our $450,000 and $500,000 houses? This is the demand-side solution. Hopefully, you've read through all this. Long story short, 10% of the value of the home, up to $20,000 for homes 420 and below, just as requested. We put, so the ARPA dollars that I mentioned before, 7.5 million went to next-generation housing, 2.5 million went to Harton Homestead. Our Economic Development Corporation acts as the banker in collaboration with our local mortgage companies, which, by the way, same process, brought all the groups together, mortgage lenders, banks. The way that this program works is just like the VA loan that I've benefited from five times now, except inverse, because less than 1% of the population's in the military anymore. So the inverse is, I served in Iraq, I came home, I qualified for a VA loan. Now, in this program, you qualify for our program if you qualify for a mortgage. So it's tied to that mortgage, it actually sits as a second mortgage, and you have one of three ways of earning it back, and it's earned back, okay? You can pay it, I mean, 0%, you pay it whatever rate you wish. You can volunteer at local nonprofits. For every dollar that, for every hour you volunteer, $25 is deducted from that $20,000. For every dollar you donate, 70 cents is deducted. If you do real quick math, you can figure out in five years' time, if you work one week in a month, two weeks a year, somebody might have been in the Army National Guard, you can earn in five years' time. And if you don't, you don't want to pay a dime, God bless you, you don't have to. But when you sell that house and the mortgage closes, we get our money back. In every scenario, the taxpayer is protected. So that particular program, our nonprofit organizations, our churches, all of those groups absolutely love it. And my executive assistant Tara is here with us today, I mentioned. Her son-in-law and daughter are participating in the program. So their new dog and the Humane Society love it, too. So that is a little bit about next-generation housing and Harton Homestead. Thank you for the education at this campus. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present to you. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
So yeah, are there any questions, the council? For the public comment, we'll open it up for the five minutes, like we've done with previous speakers.
I have a couple of questions, I was looking through, and I was just wondering, how do you design for like multi-use paths? Because in the designs I was looking at, there didn't seem to be any sort of areas for multi-use paths, like we're walking with bike colors, scooters, scooters are a big issue now, right? Also, what was the philosophy on the locations between, say, single-family duplex or multiplex? Did you have that, any discussions based on that sort of allotment of where to put these different things in, sort of multi-zone districts, areas for average distance to public spaces, parks and so forth? Were those parts of the designs? Or were they sort of, were you putting these zones in these housing developments into areas that already had, say, parks nearby? So I was just wondering if you had considered any of those issues and accessibility?
Yes, great question. So I know it's hard to see in the aerial photos, and I'd love to invite you up to Jackson or Kewaskom same day to show you. In Jackson, against my opposition, there's sidewalk on both sides of that entire development. And you can't quite see it, but as you're heading south, there's actually sidewalks that traverse into the adjacent neighborhoods. So in that case, there isn't, there aren't walking paths, but it's sidewalks throughout the community. So there's a community park with a splash pad and actually the, their park and recs facility about two blocks away, and you can get to all of it by five-foot-wide sidewalks in Jackson. In Kewaskom, that facility is literally across the street from the football field. So you quite literally walk across the street on sidewalk. And then as regard to how did we decide what goes where? In the Oaks of Jackson in particular, everything that's in green is the smaller single-family. The larger single-family's on the outside, and the reason that is is because it matched much more closely to the neighborhood immediately adjacent. And then you can see some duplex over here. What you can't see is, there's more, this stretch over here will be condos, more traditional multifamily, but ownership, homeownership. And that is immediately adjacent to an apartment complex. So we tried to blend it as best we could with the neighborhoods around, and the same thing holds true in Hartford and Kewaskom as well. And there's a second project in Jackson that is called, I think it's called The Creeks or Cedar Creek. That is a condo, multifamily condo style as well, and it's built adjacent to grocery store and other condos. So we tried to, we really leaned heavily on the planners and the administrators to try to find spots that rationally worked for all the reasons and all the questions that you asked.
Local corner stores or businesses, you mentioned the grocery store nearby. Was that part of the plan as well? Or were these areas sort of being situated sort of with the inconvenient locations to like the corner store sort of thing?
Yeah, within convenient locations is the best way to explain it. The Hartford one-off, that particular neighborhood is about as far out in the city of Hartford as you can get, just to the north of there is literally their airport, and then it's farm fields. But other than that, it's all been, all been adjacent to amenities like the ones you just explained. Small corner shops and grocery stores.
Any other question?
I had a couple of questions about the Harton Homestead initiative. I was, my first question, is it home-to-home only? Or do they already have to be homeowner to use the program?
No, as long as they qualify for a mortgage, then qualify. So, and here's the other thing that's interesting about both next-gen housing and Harton Homestead. There's no income requirements, there's no age requirements, it's just got to be a house that's 420 and below. So next-generation housing, the very first home that sold, a couple in their 60s who were moving down the housing cycle instead of on their way up. So they moved from, I think, if I remember right, a three-acre lot type of situation, down. And the same, we have several examples in Harton Homestead that are more elderly couples or single individuals. So there's, all across the board, which is exactly what we wanted.
Great. My only other question is, how are you promoting the program? Like, how are you reaching people?
A number of ways. So one of the, let me tell you this way, let me use the example of the program itself. So Harton Homestead opened back up maybe two months ago with another $1 million in incentives, again, at 20,000 apiece. And with, we opened it at 10:00, by 11:53, all of them were gone. So we can't, to be honest, I've told my staff to stop advertising because they go so fast. The demand is so high that we haven't really had to do much. When people find out, the number of stories that we've gotten, and Tara can attest to this, when, the number of stories we've gotten, we go to a number of mortgage closings too for Harton Homestead, that people literally were looking at moving to North Carolina, South Carolina, Texas, Arizona, because there's no homes around here. And then this, they found this program and got lucky enough to win the lottery, so to speak. That's what kept them here, close to mom and dad, or close to their sisters and brothers, something like that. Pretty impressive. So the program itself is doing all the work. We don't have to do a lot of advertising.
Awesome, yeah, so I graduated from West Ben West High School. And so I remember when Jackson was a town of 7,000 people. And I, so it was really cool to see this. I'll tell you, I actually went to West Ben yesterday. And it's kind of funny because as I get off on Pleasant Valley and I drive up Highway G or somewhere along the way, every single time I drive up there, there's a new business on the side of the road, especially Highway G. There was nothing up there 10, 15 years ago. And so I did a search, I did a search on what businesses have expanded in the last three years in Washington County. And I got a huge list. Ritec, Cerrograph, Signacast, Groome, Drexel, Maysteel, Delta Defense, Gale, Quad. And I guess my question to you would be, you know, does that business development, particularly manufacturing, does it go hand-in-hand with this stuff? I mean, we talked about how many engineers you have, looking for housing and stuff. And what is your focus with regards to that?
So I'm a big believer in economic development is driven by the industry that you have. And I don't necessarily mean manufacturing, I just mean industry at large. Prosperous businesses create prosperous families, which create prosperous communities. And it's a cycle that once you get the flywheel moving, it'll carry itself. The city government, county government doesn't have to do much, but if we can inject a little capital at the front to make it go, the whole thing happens on its own. And quite honestly, the faster you step back and just let it go, it's going to go. So in the handout that I gave you, if you go to the back, I know this is a weird, long way of asking, answering your question, but the fourth from last page, there's a blue and white-looking spreadsheet. So one of the unique features about our Harton Homestead program, when we started the program, we thought, well, if we could get 10% of our participants to be from out of county and move in, that'd be pretty good. If you look at the spreadsheet, under demographics, the percentage, if you go to the third column, you'll see the percentage is 37%. So I used to always say, if I can get my son to come back, you know, and bring a girl from Fond du Lac County or something, then we're winning. If we get one from Illinois, I guess I'd be okay, too. Just kidding, John. But point being, with that demographic pyramid, we've got to get our kids to come back, and we've got to get other folks to come with them. And that's not just a Washington County or Walworth County, that's a Wisconsin issue. This, our economic development director, if he was standing right here, he would tell you, this program is the single greatest workforce development initiative he's ever seen. And I know because he said it publicly several times.
Say that again?
Pardon?
The housing?
The Harton Homestead program, yeah. I mean, and housing too, I mean, don't get me wrong, both of them are good. The problem is, we can't build houses fast enough. If we could take our housing program, our goal is to build 1,000 homes by 2032. The market study that you saw at the beginning told us we need 3,500. And our thought was, that prosperity cycle, if we get the first 1,000, the private sector will take care of the rest. It's, we believe it'll move so fast that we aren't going to have to do a ton. You've just got to give people an opportunity that, and I'm telling you, the folks that we meet, it'll bring you to tears. I mean, if you're a believer in just giving people a shot, and I think most of us in America are, I mean, these programs are unbelievable. But here's the thing, we've done this, we've done all this stuff before.
Usually, that's orange, Joe. So I moved, hit second because he was the loudest. To approve the consent agenda, Heather, if you'd please read the consent agenda.
Approve upcoming council meeting minutes from March 18, 2025, and April 3, 2025. Public Works Committee meeting minutes from March 11, 2025. Disposal of city-owned vehicles through auction, Strand Task Order 25-05. 25 Street payments, Strand Task Order 25-06. Main Street, Franklin Street intersection hot location. Amendment number one to Strand Task Order number 24-04. Led service line replacement, grant opportunities for the city of Whitewater. Recommendations, recommendation of removal of Jeffrey Weibel from PARC Commission. Recommendation for approval of Lisa Dussey Smith to PARC Commission. Recommendation for... Recommendation for approval of Elizabeth Miller to the library board. Recommendation for approval of Tara McKenzie. Singer? To library board, sorry if I messed that up. February 2025. Financials and we, which was added is the Whitewater Solar joint development agreement, city and council.
All right, so there was motion to approve. Is there any council questions or comments? Any public comment on anything on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Heather, if you'd please call the roll on the motion approved.
Emma Smith?
Hi.
O Smith?
Hi.
Myshak?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Zion?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, that motion passes, that consent agenda is approved. So next up, we'll move to our city manager's report. So we have the city manager report, which John will go over, and then if you just want to also take care of world migratory bird day proclamation.
I will. I will. I'm going to move rather quickly, but again, to remind everyone, the entire city manager report concluding all of the notes is now available on the packet online. Public Works, straightforward election preparation and cleanup. Also in the water department, they're working on meter change outs. Other items include diagnosing some other problems we have at an alarm level on the UV disinfection. We're doing some stuff in GIS with our parcel layer map. That's actually going to turn into a very large project as we try and standardize our addresses and fields across the city. Police Department, Detective Gown has accepted our offer of employment. That's the detective that the council added to the budget going into 2025. And he was with the Oregon Police Department in 2015 and has served there for over four years as a detective. He has many specializations, including digital forensics, evidence collection, homicide investigations, cyber and financial crimes, as well as narcotics investigations. We're very much looking forward to him joining us. Also Captain Van Der Stee organized a clinic for first responders. Approximately 40 staff from police and fire departments received some basic estate planning through the Wills for Heroes program. Also our SRO James Garcia and dispatcher Kenna, apologize for this, Sharak, attended the Whitewater High School annual career fair to provide students with insight on what it's like working at the police department. I hear the Taser videos are always of high interest.
They have a TV there and it just, they flock to it.
Okay, so the police department also in some compliance, we have, we have been in compliance with the GO DOJ Crime Information Bureau and DEX audit. That audit is completed every three years. And also we had a meeting to go over the preliminary layout of the new PD evidence garage. Fire department, again, all the annual metrics are up for your perusal. In the week of the March 20th through the 26th, we responded to 32 calls for service or four and a half calls for service each day. Five calls required paid on call response. The average response was 1.4 per call. The following week, 38 calls for service, which is just over five calls per day. Six calls required POC response, of which we had 2.16 per call. April 3rd through Wednesday night was again, 36 calls for service for required POC help and we had two, a two alarm structure fire on Sunday, the 6th. At the library, they received a Bridges Library Systems Grant for $5,000. Those funds will go towards installing hearing loops in the new large meeting room in order to increase our accessibility for people who are experiencing hearing loss. Also National Library Week was held from April 6th through the 12th. They had swag, they, people entered for a gift card. And on the 8th was National Library Weekers Day and they treated the staff, two treats, two words twice in the same sentence. Anyway, we thank all of our library staff for their hard work and certainly looking forward to all the new stuff that rolls out with the new library. Also, April 25th was Make a Difference Day, will be Make a Difference Day, and there will be four to six volunteers coming with the library to assist moving through some of the things in storage. Last year, they had four volunteers helping them and always happy to have people a part of that program. Make a Difference Day is something that happens across the community, so if people are looking to help out, please contact us, we can always find great ways for volunteers to help out. In Parks and Rec, our facilities handled 74 tickets in March. The Lakes Advisory Committee has offered five different education and listening sessions as they build up to presenting to the common council with a resolution to create a Lakes District. So please, if you're interested in learning more about that, contact us, go online. And also, we, they continue to have huge success with our Stevie searches pictured above. For the month of March, we also celebrated National Doctors Day. And as you can see, Stevie is dressed like a doctor, maybe you can't from that far away. But Stevie was found with only two clues given, which apparently is a big deal. In Media Services, they've been hard at work editing videos, including more for the Bridging Whitewater series. And in a bittersweet note, but also a great opportunity for him, we want to thank Kyle, our talented media producer. He's going to be joining WTMJ 4. He's a grad artist over at WTMJ 4, which is an awesome opportunity and we certainly love that the city was a small part in that process of his transition. I believe you are a UW grad now?
I am.
So all very good stuff. So thank you very much, thank you for being a part of it and good luck in the future. In HR, our staff took part in the career fair as well. About 90 students stopped by to learn about future career paths and seasonal job opportunities. Apparently the nerds were a big hit, peanut butter cups and airheads. April 1st, our HR staff had the opportunity to assist at the central count for absentee ballots. A total of 1,167 absentee ballots were processed that day. So thank you to everyone who was a part of that. That is not glamorous, but is a crucial part of our fair and accurate election process. Also, HR staff played their role in that, so thank you. We had some park and recs people as a part of that as well. Economic Development, so staff met with demolition companies that are going to be doing demo at 126 Jefferson, which, what's that going to be, Taylor?
It's just going to be demoed, the CDA hasn't decided yet. Who may know it as the old Coligan Building.
Okay. 216 East Maine, I think we have a partnership happening with Habitat for Humanity.
The resolution will be going on tonight.
Awesome. And 100 East Maine is also being demolished and that is tentatively, we're in works to make that apart. Let's see, and also Taylor is, this is her last meeting, so congratulations Taylor on this being your last meeting in Whitewater. Thank you for your show. Taylor's going to be the planning and development director in Sheboygan. Also, the Public Arts Committee is still accepting applications for the traffic boxes, which are pictured above. We have a program to have those repainted. And Neighborhood Services staff met with the new city attorney to talk about the process for municipal code violations. Oh, I got ahead of myself, next slide. Thank you, Taylor. You're on the next, there are a few, there's a couple blanks you got to keep going. Thank you, Taylor, for your time here, all of the things we're involved in, managing the CDA and all of the projects. You started a lot of good things that will be carried forward and we're going to miss your energy. Also, if you have any questions or concerns, please contact the chief of staff. And as always, anyone who wants to get in contact with me, my information is there. Thank you very much. Mr. President, send it back to you.
You want to talk about birds?
Yes.
Not the scooters though.
Not the bird scooters. Okay, I've got a proclamation for World Migratory Bird Day, which is May 10. So today we're here to claim that World Migratory Bird Day is observed nationwide on May 10 each year, whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our community. And whereas many citizens recognize and welcome migratory songbirds as symbolic harbingers of spring. And whereas these migrant species also play an important economic role in our communities, the role of insect pests have generated millions of recreational dollars statewide. And whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining to the Americas facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes and in both their summer and winter homes, whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And whereas citizen enthusiasts about birds, informed about the threats they face and empowered to help address those threats and directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations. And whereas since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day, formerly International Migratory Bird Day, has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico and the Caribbean, and the Southern US. And whereas hundreds of thousands of people will observe WMBD gathering in town squares, community centers, schools, parks, nature centers, and wildlife refuges to learn about birds, take action to conserve them, and simply have fun. And whereas WMBD officially is held each year on the second Saturday of March, its observance is not limited to a single day. The planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. And whereas WMBD is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds and to celebrate the support, uh, and, sorry, celebrate and support migratory bird conservation, but also a call to action. And now therefore, I, John Weidell, City Manager, for the city of Whitewater, do hereby proclaim May 10, 2025 as World Migratory Bird Day in the city of Whitewater. And I urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and as a world, and in the world at large, proclaim this 15th day of April, 2025. Thank you.
All right. All right, so next up, we have staff reports. So we do have, maybe we can group these together. So number 18 and number 20 were related to questions that were posed to Professor Kirk Paulson and Greg Johnson from Ellers, oh, and public comment response from April 3rd council meeting. So I don't know if there's any discussion that council wants, they are in the packet, the public does have access to them. Is there any questions or additional clarifications that any council members would wish to ask?
Staff can continue to field any follow-up that comes later and we will of course respond to it and enter it into the record.
All right. So then with that, we have item number 19, which is to set the date for the council visioning session, so.
Pick a date. I don't know if you need me.
You might need to bring the calendar up.
It's typically not done on a meeting date, which is why it's on the agenda and we're asking you to schedule it. Typically takes about two hours.
Last year, I believe you just picked a different Tuesday.
So May 26th is Memorial Day, so if we want to keep with the Tuesdays, I know sometimes that's DPW and Finance, but those could always be moved. So we have the 13th of May would be an option, and then if we move into June, we'd be looking at the 3rd or 10th. Or no, 3rd is a council meeting. So I don't know.
I'm okay with the 13th. I'm the worst as you should be.
Make sure it's in order.
I'd be good with the 13th.
Any objection to the 13? All right, so we will have a, six, I mean, would anybody be opposed to moving that to six?
Then we move up to Public Works at the 5:30, which is fine.
We're officially on this.
Right, they've been doing five o'clock, Public Works.
Okay.
So yeah, six o'clock.
Yep.
On the 13th, special meeting, so we will make three meetings, three Tuesdays in a row in May.
And then have that meeting up in that upstairs conference room, like we're finance and stuff normally means?
Yes.
Correct, like.
Yes.
All right. All right. Next up, we have hearing of citizen comments. No formal council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised may become part of a future agenda. And participants are allotted a five minute speaking period. And although specific items listed on the agenda may not be discussed at this time, we do allow for public input when those items come up for debate. So if there's anything not on the agenda or any questions for County Executive Schuman, just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anybody, Brad's like here today.
I can go online.
All right, we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution approving Habitat for Humanities proper, the purchase CDA proper at 213 West Main Street, Whitewater, Wisconsin, parcel TRA 0003. Taylor, you're probably loading them up for us.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, there's things that, you know, they, they have to be finished up. So just like how John mentioned today, the CDA currently has property on 216 East Maine. For those that are not familiar with that address, it's across from Far, or it's across from Five, sorry, Lopez, it currently has like a metal sculpture in front of it. It is a blighted building, the CDA would like to move forward with making it possibly two single family homes for Habitat for Humanity. They've worked with them, we just need a resolution from, from you here tonight.
Move by Hicks second and by Smith O.
Smith O.
Smith O. We'll tell you Smith O then. So the resolution is to, our motion is to approve the resolution. Are there any council questions on this item? Any public comment on this item? All right, since it is a resolution, we do have a roll call, so Heather, if you please call the roll.
Singer?
Hi.
Hicks?
Hi.
Sorry. Smith O?
Hi.
Shannon?
Ah.
Zion?
Hi.
Myshak?
Hi.
Emma Smith?
Hi.
All right, so that resolution is passed, so next up, we'll move to first readings. Ordinance 2025-011, an ordinance creating section 2.62.060, public comment during common council and committee meeting. So Mr. Hicks, I think this, second. Move by Hicks, seconded by O Smith. To approve the first reading. Oh yeah. And then any council questions initially? All right, public comment.
David Stone, 303 Ann Street. I was wondering, under section four, meeting conduct, part B, says expectations of the public, if you could remove clapping. It says, audience members shall not engage in shouting, clapping. I think clapping is all right. About a year and a half ago, when the library addition came forward, the council chambers was actually full, the chairs were pretty much full. And when council decided to allocate some money towards that, it broke out in, in clapping and I heard some clapping tonight. And so I don't think, so I just ask you to remove the word clapping. Thank you.
I'll amend my motion to remove the word clapping.
Is there rejection by the second?
Yeah.
All right, any other public comment on this item? All right, so the motion is to approve the first reading. Heather, if you'd please call the roll, with the amendment of clapping now being allowed.
O Smith?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
Zion?
Hi.
Myshak?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Emma Smith?
Hi.
Hicks?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
O Smith?
Hi.
All right, so that resolution is passed, so next up, we'll move to first reading of ordinance 2025-011, an ordinance mending chapter 1.24 city limits. Brad has emerged. Can you read? So we will hear from Brad. I'll read both versions on the cap.
Pretty straightforward, we just did an annexation. We have a boundary in our ordinance that needed to be updated. The version online, I don't believe, was the redline version where you could see the edits, so I do believe that was handed out today, but just pretty straightforward.
Do you all have to read the whole thing word for word?
No.
Feel free.
Move by Myshak, O Smith, second. So any council questions or comments? Any public comment on this item? All right, first reading approval. Heather, if you please call the roll.
Zion?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Myshak?
Hi.
Emma Smith?
Hi.
Myshak?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Zion?
Hi.
All right, that motion is approved, so that ordinance will not be seen again. All right, next up is second reading, ordinance 2025-012, an ordinance mending the zoning map of those zoning classification in regarding to certain properties in the city of Whitewater, tax parcel WP 0329 and tax parcel 29205153233008, which are vacant plots on Brish, Brish Road, a private road.
Correct. This is, this is the second reading, so I won't go too much into it. For our new members, the land is currently zoned for agricultural, ag, ag, agricultural transition. I cannot talk tonight. They are looking to make it an R3. This did pass the PARC. It came to the common council, the common council.
tax parcel WP 0329 and tax parcel 29205153233008, which are vacant plots on Reish Road, a private road.
Correct. This is the second reading, so I won't go too much into it. For our new members, the land is currently zoned for agricultural... Ag... agricultural transition. I cannot talk tonight. They are looking to make it an R3. This did pass the PARC. It came to the common council. The common council unanimously approved it at the first reading. Oh, no, they did not unanimously approve it. I stand corrected. I apologize.
Move the rule. Second.
All right, move by Mychak, seconded by O. Smith to approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-012. Any council discussion? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Heather, if you please call the roll.
Hicks?
No.
Mychak?
Hi.
O. Smith?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
M. Smith?
No.
Shannon?
Hi.
Sayoun?
Hi.
Okay, that motion passes. So next up, we'll move on to considerations. So the first one up is Boarding Commission Council appointments, recommended by Council President and City Manager.
Page 207 in your packet, if you have the culmination of everyone's submissions.
So I know John had reviewed our ordinance and had sought a legal opinion that clarified that the Boarding Commission process we use for citizens is worded in a way that would apply as well to council members. So in an effort to be expeditious in our appointing of the council members, we did solicit the council to submit to the city clerk privately their selections. John and I met on Thursday morning and reviewed. Most of them fell quite in line with where people wanted. Most of the time, it was very easy just to say, oh, wait, those three, those two, those are the ones that wanted it. So there were a couple instances where there was maybe a couple, you know, people that were close in terms of wanting it, but in trying to, you know, kind of spread load the interest as well as we have our alternates policy that exists within the council. So I'm assuming if you really want to go to one of these meetings, you'll probably have the opportunity to go to one of those. So it is in the packet, but if I can read through them just for the public record, and then if there's a motion or if there's any discussion on like, hey, I want to switch that out or, you know, people want to discuss it, then we can definitely open it up. All right, so just going down the list real quick. So the alcohol licensing committee would be Mychak, Shannon, and Singer. The border review is Mychak, Shannon, and O. Smith. And then that is the ordinance dictated ones. Those are council members in their last term. And then I volunteered to be the fourth member since we don't have four members up for reelection in the spring. CDA, Shannon and O. Smith. Community Involvement in Cable TV Commission, M. Smith. Equal Opportunities Commission, O. Smith. Finance Committee would be Shannon, Singer, and M. Smith. Intergovernmental Cooperation Council. This is just for clarification. This is the body of that Walworth County kind of facilitates of local units of government. I put myself down, but I'm open to like if anybody wants to go during... It's not really a formal committee like the rest of them. So that one, it has my name, but when those meetings come up, we can definitely send that out to the group if anybody wants to go. I think it's Corr. Landmarks Commission, O. Smith. They made an impassioned plea to keep E. Orange, so you must be doing a good job on there. Library Board would be Sayoun. Parks and Rec Board would be Hicks. Pedestrian and Bike Advisory Board would be Sayoun. Plan Commission, the primary would be Hicks. The alternate would be M. Smith. And a Public Arts Commission would be Sayoun. And the Public Works Committee would be Hicks, Mychak, and M. Smith.
Move approval?
Second.
So move by Hicks, seconded by O. Smith to approve this slate. Any discussion? Any public comment on the forwarding commission appointments? All right, seeing none. Heather, if you please call the roll.
M. Smith?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
Sayoun?
Hi.
O. Smith?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Mychak?
Hi.
Hicks?
Hi.
With point of clarification, with the alternate rotating policy, do we need to reestablish that now that we have new members?
It will be on the next meeting. It wasn't at this meeting due to a simple, I forgot about it because it's new.
Cool.
So the memo has already been written. It will be on the next agenda.
The hope is that that ordinance, that process, doesn't have to be availed itself that much.
We're close to standing.
Hopefully, we can get to the next meeting with a question on there. All right, so next up is item number 17, discussion possible action regarding extension of Police Department memorandum of understanding with Whitewater Unified School District regarding school resource.
Dan, that will be very quick. That's all right. I'm going to tee it up to Dan. It was simply, we have a talk about the correspondence. I fall where I always fall, making sure things are in compliance with the contractual obligations. So we are here recommending a slightly different process from what the school district administrator proposed because we want to make sure that we're operating in alignment with the state statute that governs intergovernmental agreements. So I asked Dan to prepare everything else after that, and he can work it through.
And I'll just give a brief description here. So on April 9th, I received a memo from Superintendent Caroline Pate Hefty stating that the school district is ending the existing school resource officer agreement that expires June 30th, 2025, citing unresolved issues that have come up during the life of the MOU and the potential that they may need to bid out other police departments or services. The police department sees tremendous value in our SRO program, and we feel strongly that retaining that relationship with the school district is essential and is in the best interests of students. That said, I feel it's important for both the police department and the school district to wait to consider any changes to the SRO agreement until a new superintendent is in place to ensure that that individual's input is heard. The current superintendent will be here through July 1st, as I understand. Doing that will help ensure that we have clarity on expectations from both the school district and the police department from the outset. And ultimately, I believe that a measured approach should be taken that includes a review and input from the Walworth County District Attorney, our city attorney, as well as the school district council. So all that said, what we recommend is council approval of a 120-day extension of the SRO agreement to be forwarded to the school board for review.
This will be the current SRO agreement?
Correct.
And it would be 120 days from June 30th?
Correct.
If we do nothing, it auto-rates. So that's what needs to be preemptively discussed.
And I believe the school board has indicated they'll be taking this up on the 20th.
They have, so we're trying to get things in time so before the contractual date that any non-renewal needs to be notified. We can at least have one conversation through our governing body and then their governing body about trying to keep momentum through summer school as we work towards the next school year, all of that stuff.
And I think you and I talked about if the need to... Especially once things kind of settle, maybe having a joint meeting between the two bodies, if that would help expedite it. At a staff level, you feel that would be pretty helpful at both parties, would be willing to do it. We've done stuff before with people at Center, in joint meetings, which is making that offer so we can support the police department and our school safety needs as best we can. So is there any action on the request of our police department to approve 120-day extension on the current SRO agreement that would be then sent over to the school board? Move approval?
Second.
All right. Move by Mychak, seconded by O. Smith to approve an offer to the school district for a 120-day extension of the current SRO agreement. The goal of having that be enough time to be able to renegotiate potentially a new revised agreement that will be satisfactory to both parties. All right, any public comment on this issue? All right, any council discussion questions? All right, Heather, if you please call the roll.
Sayoun?
Hi.
Hicks?
Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
O. Smith?
Hi.
Mychak?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
M. Smith?
Hi.
All right, that motion is approved. So next, we took care of 28 on the consent agenda. So next up is 29, council member requests for future agenda items. I'll stick down with you and Mr. Hicks.
But there's discuss moving council meetings to 6:00 PM start versus 6:30?
Yeah, we'll take up that ordinance or whatever governs that time and bring it back.
Steve, any future agenda?
I'd just like to see the Stareen Road update next week or at our next meeting because I know we originally talked about hearing it again in April while there were still students here. And evidently, we are out of April meetings.
Tell me a little more about that. Which, are you talking about Stareen Road, like the changes for the pedestrian?
Yes, we were supposed to review and potentially approve speed bumps in the month of April. The summer 32 on the...
The summer 32. It's a quarter to, I think, so. All right? I don't have anything. So next up, we have a motion to adjourn by...
Move second.
Mychak, seconded by O. Smith to adjourn. All in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
O's no.